A possible permit from the city to allow overnight dockage for temporarily either one night, you know, or if it's a medical issue, maybe a few nights. That's just something I'd like to suggest. I'd also like to suggest a -- the current rate structure at Lashley's is a night at the dinghy dock is more than a night on a mooring ball. A mooring ball's 13, dinghy dock 15. That includes showers, laundry, and bathrooms, which is nice. But those of us that have friends and family, I'm going to call this the friends and family rate, that are just here to visit friends and family, maybe in for a night or two a week, or three or four nights, we don't need all those facilities. All we need is a dinghy dock. So I would just offer the suggestion that possibly the rate structure could be modified so that we have a friends and family rate as a time up. And, you know, just modify the rate structure so that those of us that don't need showers, laundry, and facilities can use a dinghy dock, visit our families, visit our friends. Some people come down from up north, have friends here. So just those two suggestions. I hope they're positive. I hope they're constructive. Like I said, I am a resident here full-time. You're around to have family that lives and works here. Now it's time up.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else on GA 03-18? Please make your way to the podium. Anybody else? Please get behind the speaker that's up there now.
Good morning. Gary Skelcorn, Punta Gorda resident. There is one factor I would like to point out of this. I'm not sure if it's obvious, and I am trying to encourage compromise. I can see situations of a safety problem. You know, we have individuals that are going to come in, have entertainment at the dock, or maybe even work situation, and then later need to get back to their vessel again. Any time of evening, night, we're coming onto the storm season coming up. What would you do if you had to get back to your boat or in possibly incur a $100 fine? A thunderstorm comes up? I'm in my dinghy getting out to the vessel to avoid that? I think we're looking at a potential safety implementation issue here. I would like to encourage compromise if at all possible. Safety, I think we have a real risk for the vessel people. I'm a boater. I know what it's got, and I won't go out there in instances. But the get-to or have-to get-to is maybe too much here. Looking for compromise, that's what I'd like to suggest.
Thank you. Anybody else? Last call for GA 03-18. Last call on this, public hearing.
Motion to close the public hearing.
Second. We have a motion, second, to close the public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried unanimously. Discussion? Go ahead.
I attended the Boaters Alliance meeting last week, and we had a very long discussion with Officer Kennedy, who's the Marine Patrol Officer. And there's some unintended consequences of putting an ordinance like this in place. He has spent quite a bit of time going around to all the boats that are anchored out in the harbor and meeting with all the boat owners, speaking with all of them, making sure their boats are current registry and that they're getting their pump-outs on a regular basis, and all of the rules are being followed for those who are live-boards and who have their boats anchored out there. One of the things that happened, obviously, we know about the dinghy docks being abused and all of that, but we also had a gentleman with a huge cruiser boat who was coming into the day dock all the time with his cruiser boat and occupying one whole side of one of the day docks. And he ended up bending up his props, and now he's over at Lashley every day. So he's using a significant amount of dock space with a cruiser boat, and that wasn't one of the original intents of our day docks, I don't believe. Even though it's allowable, it's not preferable. But what I would suggest, I understand we have to have something that's enforceable, and that's one issue, but I would suggest that we set up some kind of a process whereby these two gentlemen, for example, that they could perhaps buy a permit from the city that would allow them access to the day docks for certain times. And in the case of an airline pilot, he's got a very sporadic schedule. He's in and out at all different hours of all days and nights. And there has to be a happy medium. And at the times of the year when Fisherman's Village and Lashley Marina are both overloaded with boat traffic staying there on a long-term basis, there has to be an alternative for those people. And I'm just going to suggest that we consider putting some kind of a program in place where we can issue a permit, and maybe they renew it every three, or four, or six months. I don't know how often it's going to have to be, but we've got a lot of traffic that's here right now just for season. So maybe we can do a three- or a four-month kind of a permit that would allow them to come ashore and have unlimited availability for those docks without a penalty for them. So rather than being the dock police and taking a lot of the police department's time up, this might be a reasonable alternative. We know we don't have the showers and all of that at Gilchrist Park, and that probably won't ever happen according to what we've heard from the surveys we received. But those services are available at Fisherman's Village, and they are available at Lashley Marina if somebody wants to go to their day docks for dinghies, and they can use those services. So I'm just offering this as an alternative way of trying to be really heavy-handed with an ordinance that is going to be heavily enforced and cause problems.
Where is the language section 618 with the fines? I don't see it in this.
It already existed, so it wasn't in this ordinance. The section, when it did for boat ramps, the section's already included, so there were no changes to that.
Okay.
It was already existing for this section. If you want to see it, I can.
Yes, please.
I would agree that if we can provide some manner for those who, by virtue of the fact that they're jobs, or it could be something where somebody has -- well, we know that they're going to be extenuating circumstances, and there could be illnesses or whatever, but at least a permit or a registration or some sort so that somebody who may be working a medical worker, may be working at night kind of thing, and may need to do that. So it's, there are those situations, and I think for us just to have the ordinance as it reads is needed, but we need to allow for accommodate those other situations. So I don't know how we would do that. What's the easiest way for staff? But it's at least.
Would they pay a fee?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes, according to what John Kennedy said, he has talked with almost every boater out there, and they are, and Mr. Thames is shaking his head, yes. They're very willing to work with the city, and they're very willing to pay a nominal fee to have the access available to them at different hours, and I think that's really key. We have communication ongoing with them all now. We didn't have that before, and the police department has been routinely checking the docks to make sure that no one is abusing the privilege of using them, so.
Well, and other people that have opined on this issue, it's helping people understand that many of the things that we need is, you need an upland facility in order to be able to accommodate people, and we're not going to have an upland facility at Gilchrist Landing. So Fisherman's Village does have an upland facility, as does the Lashley Marina. However, sailboats can't get under Lashley Marina. So we understand these issues. So if what we can do is just accommodate that overnight dinghy parking for a fee, I think is great.
But my situation with that, if we do permits, then if every single one of those people out there gets a permit, they're just, you know, then what have we accomplished? I mean, for extenuating circumstances, I mean, I wish we could have invited Officer Kennedy here. We could hear from him directly. You know, not that I don't, you know, take what you're saying, but I would like to hear from him if he's, you know, got that valuable information.
Chief Davis, are you here?
I mean, I don't think they're prepared, but.
Well, I'm sure she's up to speed on what's going on because they've been communicating pretty regularly about it. But I just think it would be nice if we could issue some kind of a sticker permit that they could put on their vessel, that they can, when they come to shore, at least they're identified as one of the people that's out there on anchor, that there would be some way that we can work with them.
I mean, really, though, in our watch command report, people call and say, you know, parking situations in the aisles or something of that nature, like, you know, somebody's staying overnight, and they may be on the street to let people know. I mean, I don't think it needs to be so formalized because then that's going to be staff time, and then the length of the permit, and then how many permits do we issue? And if we issue one to everyone, then they could just keep their dinghies there.
But those situations are known situations. In the case of the gentleman who spoke about, is a pilot, I believe, and you don't know when your flight's going to get delayed because of whatever. So you don't know that you're going to get in. You expect to get in at 10:00 in the evening, and you don't get in until 3:30 in the morning. I mean, those kind of situations occur, and you're helpless in that situation unless you call the PGPD number and say, hey, this is my situation. I mean, whatever it is, we need to provide some sort of way for people to be able to accommodate that.
We got this hand, now we got Chief Davis in here.
Well, I have some suggested language for discussion purposes, but let's, I'll present then.
I like what Mr. James said about maybe like a one-day special. When I say this, because ultimately, if everyone got permits, we would have what the issues that Sarah said I had, everyone having a permit, we just have a mess. And then I think this is to prevent people from literally having overnight dinghies. But I do think that if, like you mentioned, if you could have a situation, people could maybe get a special permit. A special permit is a special permit. But on a regular basis, we would, no purpose in doing this regulation at all.
Gary.
Okay. So I am very empathetic that for the folks that have to anchor out on Gilchrist to allow them to use the day docking facility to be able to get safely to and from shore. What Lynn, Councilmember Lynn Matthews brought up earlier is something that I'm not seeing in the discussion. I think we do. To me, there's a difference between a dinghy and a cruiser. Okay? The cruiser's a problem. Okay? The dinghy is a situation that we need to come up with a solution for. Okay? A dinghy is a dinghy. It's not my, it's not, you know, so, and then frequently, and I'm just throwing this out, is frequently in many communities, they treat, and we could treat this as a community or neighborhood, if you will, it's the Gilchrist Anchorage Community or something like that, that you have permits for the community that'll give them a little extra privilege that the general public wouldn't normally get. Because, and they apply, and they have their sticker in their windshield, and, you know, they have nighttime parking there that might not be available to the tourists and so forth. And that can happen in a number of communities. So there would be a way to identify the people that are using the facility as a neighborhood would have it. So if you had to, if you're flying out at 5:30 in the evening, and you have, we know you, and you're part of that neighborhood, and you leave your dinghy on, your dinghy, not your cruiser, your dinghy on the dock that night, it's not that big a deal.
Tied to the dock.
Tied to the dock, yes. Part. Let me use a "part," okay? It's not that big a deal because we know what's going on because they're part of the neighborhood versus a transient person that's just coming in for the night, or for a week or what have you. They wouldn't necessarily be eligible for this permit because of that transientness, but, and they would have to comply, you know, with the fact that they wouldn't be odd delivered, they can enjoy the nightlife, but they have to be back to their boat by 11:00, otherwise they turn into a pumpkin or something. So, you know, I think that's the solution to sort out, and then also to deal with a way to prohibit the cruiser situation at Lashley. It's one thing to come in and say, okay, I'm going to bring my boat in, which is a large, significantly large boat, just as Councilmember Matthews is, and we want to go have dinner at the Crab House, and we want to pull in, and we're going to stay two hours. You know, we can have a nice dinner in two hours, have that incredible ice cream for dessert that's downstairs, and then we're going to get on a boat, and we're going to go home. Okay? That's fine. That's what that should be for. It shouldn't be for, gee, I'm out in the mooring field, and I'm going to go to work at Plattner Automotive, and I'm going to bring my 50-foot cruiser and leave it on the day dock while I go sell some used cars at Plattner Automotive. You know, we don't want that to happen. So I think that's really what we need to sort out. I think we should try to come up with a sorting fork for the community, and then also a way to deal with the transits, and then also a way to handle the obvious abuser. I think that's our challenge.
Let's hear from our.
Do you have a question for me?
Well, it was brought up that Officer Kennedy made a presentation of the Boaters Alliance and provided a lot of information about what is actually going on out there, and then Lynn reported on that. So I just was saying it would have been nice to have had that firsthand here today had we known that. So maybe we need to pause, maybe we need to invite him back, and, I mean, I would be fine with that to just further explore and get him.
I'll definitely have him come to the next, do you want to have him at the next council meeting?
Yes.
Absolutely. Absolutely.
And this would give us time to explore what Gary's saying right now in terms of creating that kind of framework.
And maybe we can take another look at the possibility of doing some kind of a permit for those who are live-boards who are here for a long term. I mean, are you two gentlemen here long term?
Yes.
Okay. So, I mean, and how many boats are out there long term? Do you have any idea?
Probably four.
Yeah, you can speak from the audience. I'm sorry. Come to the podium.
Sorry, and I forgot we closed the public hearing.
Right off the top of my head, I think four.
Okay. So we're not talking, thank you. So we're not talking about a huge amount of people, and I just think that, you know, we profess to be.
Build it, they will come.
Yes.
Well, yeah, but, I mean, you know, we profess to be a boating community, and we need to be able to, we need to do something about that. I mean, we, you know, this is, this is what we're trying to accomplish with the new waterfront master plan that we're working on with the Boaters Alliance. So I'm just suggesting that we try to be boater-friendly and work with these folks because they are honorable people who are here, and they do have jobs, they're working, they're going to and from shore, and, you know, I just think it would make a lot more sense than.
I think what the Vice Mayor was talking about, though, is exactly right. It wasn't a dinghy that was coming to these day docks. It was a big gigantic boat that was docking up all day and all night. So it was a huge, and it was just moving from Lashley to.
Well, that's a new one.
And that's my point, and a point that our citizen Gary Skelcorn made. We don't want to also, because of weather or something like that, ask somebody to do something that's unsafe.
Right. Which in our code here, it says after a prior written warning, we're not going to just slap them $100 ticket right away.
Exactly.
And we do have communication with the people through the officer.
Yes.
I mean, he probably knows which dinghy belongs to which boat, I would guess.
And I've heard rumors that most of our police officers, in fact, all of our police officers have had mothers and can be very empathetic to unusual situations. I think that's the case. And as you pointed out, it got pointed out, and you guys kind of among yourselves thought handled one of the issues very rapidly. So I think it's a question, everybody here wants to be good neighbors, and we want to be empathetic to the people that want to be in part of our community. We just have to figure out how to sort it out.
And I would also like the homeowners association, if you haven't already talked about this, to talk about it.
We talked about some, homeowners, what they're saying is they're very concerned about pretty much the community building up of people who are parking a boat out there as opposed to using, utilizing Fisherman's Village, Lashley Park. Or maybe this is an opportunity for our business community to develop new business based on this. But just having long-term stays just to stay is problematic because it does impact, because it is a neighborhood. In the same way that you have to think about traffic on a road, we have to think about the impact on the neighborhood of just having a million boats out there, and making it too easy to live here is not necessarily in the interest of, I think, our residents.
So if we could get him back to the next meeting, and do you want to talk about?
Couple of things. First, based on the discussion, I suggest that you reopen the public hearing and continue this public hearing until the next city council meeting. So we have a date certain, we don't need to re-advertise. The, you know, I'm not sure that I recall really being involved in any discussions regarding the utilization of the day dock by the residential neighborhood compared to the discussions concerning the day dock at Lashley Park.
Not use of. Their concern is that there was trash and boats.
No, no, no. Yeah, no. So I do know, though, because I was involved in the permitting of the day docks at Lashley Marina, that the idea was that those weren't intended to be restricted to dinghies. It was intended that anybody would come in with any size vessel as long as they could fit, and not for overnight, but to come in and enjoy the city and then leave. So I'm not sure that we are in a position, the way things are currently, to restrict sizes of vessels at the Lashley Park Marina. On the other hand, I don't think it was ever intended that the docks over by the Boat Club were intended to be serving large vessels. So, you know, we can address that situation differently. Similarly, you know, we've got a dock master over at Lashley Park. We have restroom and shower facilities and all that kind of stuff there, so we would want to more or less encourage that being used as a dinghy dock for the live-boards so that we don't have unmanned dock being used in a way that would be more difficult to regulate. Not having a solution to that, but just throwing out things for consideration when we discuss it next time. But with respect to the permitting, I'm just going to throw this out for discussion. And this would probably be related to allowing the dinghy docks to, dinghies, to utilize and require them to utilize the Lashley Park Marina dock, day dock. And that is that we have the prohibition against overnight docking between those hours, and then I would add language such as, without a permit issued by the city's dock master, the permit shall be for a maximum of three consecutive days, no more than two permits per vessel within a 30-day consecutive, 30-day consecutive period. I think we have something similar to that with respect to garage sales, for example. We issue permits for garage sales, but there's a limit to how many permits you can get for a garage sale within a certain period of time so that people don't have their property being used for daily or weekly garage sales. So that would be kind of the concept I would draw. There's nothing magical about the days, but when we bring, when we come back next time, if that's something that you might be willing to consider with further input from the people that would be affected by it, that's how we could at least address some of these concerns. We can't address every one of the exceptions that might be necessary, except for the discretion that's allowed regarding the giving a prior warning.
Sounds good. Nancy?
I like your suggestion of continuing it on as far as, excuse me, the notion of limiting how many times somebody can, I just think that that is onerous for us, and it's problematic for the people. Because in this case, you know, you might have someone who's working, and that they need to be there overnight, and that can be more than, or, you know, I just think we need to think in terms of the pilot, how many times? Don't know. You know, we're limiting it, and then all of a sudden, you're over it. Oh, gosh, you know, the schedule threw me out of that window. So I think that.
I mean, in his case, he's already said that he is looking for permanent dockage. If it doesn't work for those people, they need to find a permanent place where it does work for them. And I get what you're saying, that the Gilchrist Landing is totally unmanned and unsupervised. And actually, when we saw the signage that we have up there, we need to at least update the signage that we have there. So there is some structure to what's going on. I'm glad that they're policing themselves now. That's encouraging to hear that, but I definitely think we need to, like Jahah said, consider the impact on the neighborhood and be boater-friendly, but we can't, you know, every situation is going to be different. But I do, I do like the direction that you're going, but we need to reopen the public hearing and continue it, and then we can talk about this at the next meeting, and we can have Officer Kennedy come. Thank you. So we need a motion.
Motion to continue.
A second.
We got to reopen the public hearing for GA.
Yes. Reopen public hearing for GA is on my other page.
03-18.
And continue as the same motion, or?
That'd be fine. Continue.
A second.
We have a motion, second, to reopen the public hearing for GA 03-18, and to continue it to the next meeting, which will be April 4th. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Carried unanimously. Thank you.
Let me just share another thing to be thinking about. The obvious, one of the problems is that the dock, the day dock over by the Boat Club has a limited number of spaces. And if those spaces are being occupied by the boats that are currently out there, there's obviously no room for somebody else. If the city wanted to try to address that problem in a way that didn't use permits or prohibitions regarding times, et cetera, you know, maybe the thing to do is to consider some sort of facility like an upland dinghy storage rack so that the people can take their dinghies out of the water so that they're not accommodating, not taking up space at the dinghy dock to prevent other people from doing that.
Do you know how much they weigh?
Well, I actually belonged to a sailing club where that was what we did because we didn't have enough space for the dinghies to all be in the water at our dinghy dock. And we had upland, we had an upland rack that you could pull the water, pull the boats out of the water and put them up. It's certainly not something that two people couldn't handle.
But they're not two people doing it. There's one person going ashore to go to work. And in the case of my dinghy, when we had our dinghy, our engine weighed 90 pounds all by itself without the dinghy.
I'm just throwing that out for consideration. It worked fine for us as sailors. I'm not sure, you know, how we, whether we had large motors like that. We were a small sailing club.
I would just say for people who want to be.
In fact, in fact, I think most of us were rowers to row our dinghies out, but those were maybe days gone by.
These guys are. I think permanent, people want to be permanently, I think seeking permanent dockage is the road. That's just, I mean, it doesn't benefit the city to have people just living here. I just, it's just not, this is not even financially making any sense.
Yes. Howard.
May I caution us on going the storage route? Because the neighborhood complained regarding the storage of the sailboats by the Bayfront Center. So if we add more storage, you're going to hear from the historic District Homeowners Association once again.
I would not be in favor of storage in that location.
No, me either.
Me either.
Okay. Next, we have 1, 2, 3, 4 quasi-judicial public hearings, the first of which is AX 01-18.
Well, first, anyone that's going to be speaking on any of these four public hearings needs to rise and be sworn by the city clerk at this time, please.
Please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in today's proceedings?
I do.
Thank you. When you're ready to speak, please come to the podium, state your name, and indicate that you've been sworn.
All right. The first ordinance is AX-01-18. The first reading of an ordinance was read by title only. An ordinance of the City Council of Punta Gorda, Florida, annexing within the corporate area of the city of Punta Gorda, property generally described as multiple-loop properties, Punta Gorda, Charlotte County, Florida, and more particularly described in Exhibit A attached here, too, containing 13.78 plus or minus acres in accordance with the voluntary annexation provisions of Section 171.044 Florida statutes, redefining the boundary lines of said city in conformance therewith, meeting the official boundary map of the city of Punta Gorda, Florida, directing the city clerk to provide certified copies of this ordinance to the Charlotte County Clerk of Court, Charlotte County Administrator, Florida Department of State, and Florida Office of Economic and Demographic Research, providing for conflict and severability and providing an effective date.
Good morning. For the record, Joan LeBeau, Urban Design Manager, and I have been sworn. These are the remaining properties, all but one of the remaining properties within the Jones Loop Municipal Service Area, and they are seeking to annex into those boundaries that were previously annexed. I ask that the staff report be entered into record in its entirety. Planning Commission found the application to be consistent with the city's comprehensive plan, and they recommended approval, as did the DRC. Urban Design also recommends approval of this ordinance at the first reading, and we ask that it be scheduled for the next meeting for the second hearing. I'm available for any questions.
Questions for Joan? This is, do they, they don't have any type of presentation, do they? No. Okay. This is a public hearing. If you would like to speak on AX 01-18, now would be the time. Please take this podium over here, state your name that you've been sworn. You have three minutes. Would anybody like to speak on AX 01-18? Last call. Stand up and make your way over to this podium if you would like to speak on this item.
Move to close public hearing. Second.
We have a motion, a second, to close the public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Move approval of AX-01-18. Second.
We have a motion, a second, to approve AX 01-18. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Carried unanimously.
Next.
Next is CP dash 01-18. This is the first reading of an ordinance, which will read by title only. An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Punta Gorda, Florida, amending the city of Punta Gorda Comprehensive Plan, Future Land Use Map to Include Newly Annexed Lands, amending the future land use map to reflect the change in the current designation of low-density residential slash county and commercial slash county to highway commercial corridor slash city for 13.78 acres, being a portion of South Highlands according to the map or plat thereof as recorded in Plat Book 2, Page 6, Public Records of Charlotte County, Florida, together with Sections 28 and 21 and 28, Township 41 South, Range 23 East, being more particularly described in Exhibit A, the loop area attached here, too, providing for conflict and severability and providing an effective date.
Again, for the record, Joan Leboe, Urban Design Manager, and I have been sworn. And inadvertently, um, in your packet, you have the wrong staff report for this comprehensive plan amendment. Although it is very similar, that is the Walmart one. So I'd like to, uh, present and enter into record the corrected staff report, which is very similar to the one that you are reading. The only difference is, of course, that it is vacant land, not developed properties, and, um, everything's been advertised correctly. The, um, um- And you've, you've submitted these to us this morning. You all have a copy of it.
I will, I'm sending them across now.
Okay. She's sending it right now. The conclusions that I would like to read into record, um, this is a requested, um, comp plan amendment for the future land use to be changed to the highway commercial corridor of the city's classifications. Any future development or expansion will be required to meet all the adopted standards in place for the, uh, land use designations. The amendment does meet the criteria for processing this adoption and, um, a total of 450 residential units are available within this Loop Municipal Service Area as previously adopted in the inter-local service boundary agreement and joint planning agreement. The Punta Gorda Development Review Committee and Planning Commission both ado, uh, approved this in its entirety. Uh, staff finds that the request is consistent with our comprehensive plan. We move to recommend approval of this request and also ask that it be transmitted to the DEO for proper processing and review.
Questions for Joan on the comp plan amendment? This is a public hearing. If you would like to speak on CP 01-18, now would be the time. Please take this podium, state your name. You have been sworn. You have three minutes. Anybody like to speak on CP 01-18? Last call for anybody, CP 01-18.
Move to close public hearing.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, to close the public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Move approval of CP dash 01-18.
We have a motion and a second, Lynn, to approve CP 01-18. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Carried unanimously. She didn't hear you. Sorry. She looked up and I just said it was you.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Next we have Z 01-18.
Yes. This is the first reading of an ordinance, which will read by title only. An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Punta Gorda, Florida, rezoning 13.78 plus or minus acres, being a portion of South Highlands according to the map or plat thereof as recorded in Plat Book 2, Page 6, Public Records of Charlotte County, Florida, together with Sections 21 and 28, Township 41 South, Range 23 East, being more particularly described in Exhibit A, the loop area attached here, too. From its current Charlotte County zoning classifications of Commercial General, CG, Mobile Home Conventional, MHC, Residential Single Family 5, RSF 5, to City of Punta Gorda Zoning District Highway Commercial, HC, providing for conflict and severability and providing an effective date.
Again, for the record, Joan Leboe, Urban Design Manager, and I have been sworn. Uh, this is the companion rezoning that goes with the comprehensive plan amendment. The rezoning is the next step in this process and, um, at this time, the request is to rezone the area to the city's Highway Commercial Zoning District. Staff recommends approval and it will come back to you, um, once the comprehensive plan is, uh, has finished its review with the Department of, um, the DEO Economic Opportunity.
Joan, just for clarification, these areas were essentially non- enclave enclaves within the, the previous annexation. And these rezonings and comp plan amendments are consistent with the immediately surrounding area-
Yes, they are.
-that already exists.
Yes, they are. They will assume those, uh, they will be given those same qualifications once the, it is approved.
Any other questions?
What is a non- enclave enclave?
Well, we had to, there's, there's a definition of enclaves, uh, in the statute relating to annexation. And, uh, in order to have the loop property annexed, notwithstanding the fact that there were a few holdout properties, little donut holes in the larger donut, we entered into an interlocal agreement with, um, Charlotte County that allowed us to take advantage of a, of a separate provision in the statute relating to voluntary annexation that allowed us to, um, um, annex the, the donut without the donut hole and not running afoul of the first part of the statute.
Other questions for Joan?
The Platted Lands held.
Anybody understand that?
This is, yes, this is, we're, we're bringing in the donut hole. Thank you very much.
This is Z 01-18. If you would like to speak on Z 01-18, now would be the time. Please make your way to this podium, state your name, that you have been sworn, you have three minutes. Would anybody like to speak on Z 01-18? Last call, anybody? Jump up right now if you wanna speak. Have you been sworn, sir?
I have.
Okay? State your name and that you've been sworn.
For the record, I'm Steve Hagenbuckle with Terracap Management. We are the property owner and, uh, as suggested, that is the, the remaining parcels. We had to go through a, a very patient and time-consuming acquisition process to make sure it was fair for all parties. And, and I just wanna, um, stress that staff has been fantastic to work with, as always, um, council as well. And, um, we're, we're very excited to get the final donut holes acquired, annexed, rezoned so that we can have a, a comprehensive plan for that area and hopefully bring some very good things. Some of you may have seen, we've already started with an Aldi's Broken Ground. One of the things that's, uh, taking a little, uh, time and has delayed the project and the interest of some of the end-users is, um, the extension of wastewater or sewer, sewer runs. So that's, uh, scheduled to be completed in 2019. So, um, yeah, once all that comes together, hopefully we'll have some, some more exciting news to share with you. But again, I, I work with a lot of different counties. Howard and the, and the team, and council, legal, all the way through, the whole group, you guys have been fantastic. And, uh, Planning Department as well, um, our hats are off to you. And thank you for, uh, being such good partners with the landowners. Appreciate it. Thank you.
One quick question, please. So, uh, there is, if I understand correctly, just one remaining parcel that you do not have ownership?
Yeah. There's a very small parcel. Uh, it's, uh, less than a quarter of an acre out of 171 acres, right? This is, just so you know that, you know, I'm the second phase of, of, uh, this, um, uh, assemblage, if you will. It's been a 25-year assemblage process. And, uh, so we're, we're kind of the last phase of, of trying to accomplish this. So we have one, one property owner, uh, that owns a quarter acre and just basically has set an unrealistic, uh, ex, has an unrealistic expectation of what that quarter acre is worth. So, you know, we, I believe there's options of working around that without, uh, acquiring the property. And, uh, you know, we'll, we'll always be, uh, friendly and willing to work with him as long as, as that property owner is reasonable. So that, that's really, uh, something to be seen yet. So, but, as I said and you've seen, we're very patient and, uh, you know, we always try to do the right thing. So we'll, we'll, as they say, leave the light on for them and maybe they'll come around. Maybe not. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Z 01-18.
This is property still zone county, a little piece.
Z 01-18. Anybody else?
Move to close public hearing.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, to close the public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Move approval of Z dash 01-18.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, to approve Z 01-18. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Carried unanimously. We are going to take a break. Eight-minute break, so we'll come back at 10:45.
Oh, my goodness.